Right, welcome to the full council meeting, 19th October 2021. It's also our hearings on the representation review. Council blessing, oh, welcome to those people on Zoom also. Council blessing, councillor Henfitt.
I am a very, very young person who has been in the community for a long time. I have been living in a small town called Kaka Tono. I have been living in a small town called Kaka Tono. I have been living in a small town called Kaka Tono. I have been living in a small town called Kaka Tono. I have been living in a small town called Kaka Tono. I have been living in a small town called Kaka Tono. I have been living in a small town called Kaka Tono. I have been living in a small town called Kaka Tono.
Thank you very much. Apologies, just to note that councillor Randall is on attending the meeting through Zoom. Item number four, declarations of interest relating to items on the agenda. None members' business, if we go straight into the item six, public hearings. I just want to mention that individuals will be given three minutes and then the buzzer will ring. And then there'll be roughly around two minutes for people to ask questions. If you are representing a group, you've got five minutes to speak on and another five minutes question time. For EV, it's six minutes speaking time and four minutes question time. That's just to help us get through a very long list of people and it's going to take us a whole day today. So I look forward to your cooperation. Our first presenter today is John Hayes and he needs no introduction, Mr. John.
Well, thank you very much councillors, so it begins. I wish you luck in your deliberations. I must say, I was very surprised with the suggestion that community boards will be disestablished. I don't think there's been enough discussion in the community about that. And I take you back to your document. It mentions the more in need and currently disenfranchised and marginalised communities. I suggest that that's exactly why you need community boards. We live in very interesting times. Big government has returned with COVID-19. This morning, I was listening on the radio to the Prime Minister and she was saying, "We've reached our limits in terms of what we can do with the big government mass media approach." What we've done now is we've reached out to a multitude of organisations within communities and say, "Do what you need to get jabs in arms." If that is a Big Mac, if that is a petrol voucher, just do it. If that's a bit of money, just do it. Now, for people of my generation, this is frankly confusing. I would have thought that the opportunity of living is a big enough incentive in itself. But you see, I'm not in those minority organisations or those minority groupings, the mini groupings, that I think you are in danger of missing out on. The Facebook generation, the TikTok generation are completely different. And it seems to me in your proposal, you talk about these wonderful innovative ways of working with the community. I suspect that's going to be driven from within this building. And this building has shown deficiencies in terms of reaching out to many members of the communities, but I suspect especially those people who live in the world of Facebook and TikTok. And I urge you to keep every level of legitimacy for your organisation as possible. And community boards could and should be a layer of legitimacy within communities because they are representing their community. And if you think they have not done enough in the past, just give them a bit more power, less penalty they could do. They could, for example, handle your consultations locally because the chairs are present in your deliberations and therefore they know some of the logic that is behind your decisions, which frankly, for many people in a community, is a bit of a mystery. Certainly could help out in terms of evangelising what you're trying to do. But also, they can be people who can pick up what's happening in the communities. They can be early warning. The YOON 10A has proved to be not all that effective in the past and I think at your peril, you will dismiss community boards.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes, questions?
Yes, thanks for your presentation and also your written submission, which was very interesting. And yeah, all these submissions are going to help us make a decision. So how have, my question is, how have community boards been assisting and connecting with disenfranchised or reaching minority groups? And my second question is, if we give them more responsibility, then should they be remunerated more?
Well, I've got a feeling that everyone around this table should be remunerated more and community boards as well. There has been a tendency to co-opt the community. And one of my issues is that it seems to me that if people are not paid, they're not listened to adequately. I don't think they have been given due deference in the past, the community organisations. What community boards should be doing, I think is a very interesting discussion. I think that they should be more representative of those communities in general. And the TikTok and the Facebook generation has got to have a look in there as well. For that to happen, they've got to have genuine local cred, street cred. And I'm not suggesting they're there now, but I'm suggesting that could be a vital way of them getting the legitimacy and therefore by implication, by association, the council as well. It's a very interesting discussion about how that should emerge, but unless they are there, they cannot get legitimacy.
Councillor Pravodov.
Thank you, through Mr. Mayor, thank you, John, for coming along today and for your presentation. So I heard the Prime Minister talk this morning as well. She made the comment that for those people who haven't been vaccinated, it was about getting alongside people that they trust. And extending that to community boards, if community boards are not going to exist anymore, how can you see the community being able to have their voice?
Well, that is the issue, isn't it? I hear that there were about 100 people involved in consultation with this particular proposal. I don't know who they are. And therefore, I worry about the legitimacy of that process. And you see, the problem for, in big terms, democracy is that it's a fragile flower that's under attack. And we can see that it's being attacked by very powerful people around the world. Not so much in this country, but we all know it's eventually going to happen here as well. And if you take away that layer of potential legitimacy that is community boards, I think that you're exposing yourselves to a very difficult time in the future. And I believe in democracy, I believe in this community, I believe that all of you around this table have got its interest at heart. But I don't think the system is doing the job that we need for it to thrive.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councillor McConaughey, you have a quick one, John, really quick?
Sorry, John, this is a long question.
Oh, dear, I shouldn't have said this.
You mentioned legitimacy, we talked about collective responsibility and the bit, and community boards being able to get into the actual community and distribute messages or run consultative processes. How does that work when they don't necessarily have a vote around the table and therefore don't have responsibility? And what we've often seen is them run quite significantly different comms to the facts that as councillors we're presented?
Well, okay, comms is a big issue for the council. It's a big issue for society, frankly. The paper that the mayor used to write for so beautifully is a shadow of its former self. The little radio station that I work for is much more little now than it was two years ago. It's been tough out there in the community and therefore the funding mechanisms are really strained. You know, not everyone's like the KCDC that can just keep on putting up the rates. So the publicity mechanisms, I think, have to be different for community boards. If you're going to have some contestability of views, which I think is one of the issues you have, there'll be many people in this community who, horror of horrors, don't think that all the wisdom in the community resides in this building. And therefore, I think community boards should reflect differences. That the single song sheet, I think, has lost legitimacy. And one of the problems that you have is you seem to operate as a cabinet rather than a parliament. I think if you operated a parliament where we had a free flow of views, that you'd be much more legitimate organisation. You know, we're quite grown up on the Kapiti coast and we're quite good with robust debate. It isn't always present in this building, well, not publicly anyway.
On that note, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Rahmati Village Business Association Speaker, BD Laracy. You've got five minutes.
Five minutes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, councillors and of course, community board members. So, all right, so this submission's been made on behalf of Rahmati Village Business Association. So I thought I would just sort of clarify the fact that initially this was prepared as a private submission on my own behalf. Once I talked to business owners in the village, some of them fed back to me and said, "No, they'd like me to put it in on behalf of the group." I then sent it out to all of the businesses on our email database. Some businesses came back very supportive of the view. Some businesses didn't really care either way about community boards, but were supportive nonetheless. I did specifically ask for opposition ideas. I didn't receive any negative comments or opposing views, not to say that there isn't out there, but I believe that there's a reasonable amount of support for the submission amongst businesses in Rahmati Village. I'm not going to kind of litigate the issues, I think I've put them reasonably clear. I could sit down and rewrite lots of stuff in there and flesh out some more detail, but I'm not going to stand here and debate it. I've put forward the view, I do think there's some issues around the legality of the proposal. You know, the so what of that is not for me to decide, I don't know what the impact of that. It may be technical breaches, if there are breaches, they may be serious breaches, that's for somebody else to decide. But I wanted to flag that issue, I do think that there's issues with the legality of this proposal as it's been proposed. In terms of the actual substantive basis for the decision or the proposal, look, I'm going to say, these are my issues with it and probably some of you are going to say, so what, I disagree? That's cool, we can agree to disagree. But I think there's some very good reasons to oppose this proposal. I just don't think that the rationale stacks up for reasons that I've put forward. In terms of legitimacy, actually, as John was just saying, I think probably the issue with legitimacy is that in democracy, leaders, representatives rule this, are ruled by consent. So that legitimacy is actually fundamental in that process. I view community boards as really an essential part of the constitutional make-up at local government level here, particularly in Kapiti, some regions not. The fact is, it is part of the constitutional make-up here. And my view is that if we're going to make a substantial change to the constitution, then we should have a really good conversation about that. I don't think we should just get told, hey, here's what we're going to propose in a month's time, we're going to make a decision. I think we need to have a broader conversation. I have to admit, when this proposal was, when I first heard about it through one of the local reporters, I was quite shocked because for me, it did really come out of the blue. Now, I'm not disengaged from council, I speak to many of you throughout the year on different issues. I'm connected through different groups. I had heard sort of rumour that it was in the mix, but not really as a serious proposal. So for me, it was a shock, I can only imagine how other people must have felt. I described it as an outrageous attack on democracy and I kind of still feel that way. Though I have to admit, having written my submission, some of my issues have been resolved. But in terms of, like, I don't, I guess I don't hold it against council for having the conversation and asking, should we do things differently? It's a good conversation to have. I'm just not sure that we're at the point of the conversation where we should get rid of community boards. Community boards have now had the opportunity to put their foot, front foot forward and I hope they've done it really well. I've certainly encouraged some of them to really kind of make a strong argument and case for their survival and I hope they've made it. What comes to mind though, as I'm going through this proposal, is a parable and I'll read it because probably some of you may not know it, but it goes like this. A man had a fig tree planted in his vineyard and he came and came seeking fruit on it and found none. And he said to the vine dresser, "Look, for three years now, I've come seeking fruit on this fig tree and I find none. Cut it down. Why should it use up the ground?" And he answered him, "Sir, let alone this year, also, until I dig around it and put on manure. Then if it should bear fruit next year, well and good, but if not, you can cut it down." My feeling is that the council's saying, "Community boards aren't bearing fruit, let's test that." That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much, questions? Councillor Compton.
Thank you, through the mayor, in your submission, you make the proposal for a separate Rahmati community board, separating out the existing Paraparumu Rahmati one. I was hoping you might be able to expand on that idea. Is it because in your view, you've got, well, it must be about eight or 9,000 people between Rahmati Beach and Rahmati South? And it's a distinct enough community in its own right that you feel like it deserves that separate representation from Paraparumu?
I mean, that outstanding idea to have a separate community board for that area, yes. Yeah, no, look, I think that's a, one of the issues we have, as I've sort of pointed out, we've got, you know, we're part of, on the ward, we're part of Paikakariki Rahmati and on the community board, we're Paraparamu Rahmati and it's sort of a bit divided. That area, I believe, is big enough to warrant a community board of its own, it's similar in size to Otaki and we've seen what's happened in Otaki through having a community board. Rahmati is kind of conceptually divided, there's, you know, Rahmati South is often referred to differently as Rahmati Beach, but I see it as a real opportunity to start to unite the area, okay? So it's kind of more of a going forward than looking back and saying how it is. It's saying what she, how we could be is something slightly different. And I think that a community board would help to really start to unify, deal with the local issues, give that local voice centrally between the two Rahmatis, if you like, and push forward that local identity much more strongly.
Thank you.
Councillor Henfitt.
Kiwabeh, I'll go and ask the first question that I had, councillor Compton. But the second question that I have, kind of leading on from John's comments too, and a question that I hope to put to him, but I think it'll be interesting to hear your thoughts, is how you feel the concept currently of community boards could be enhanced to bear more fruits, especially for the TikTok and Facebook generation that John was referring to? How do you think, from your point of view, how do you think, and not only for that, for my generation, for that generation, but for people who might be on the outskirts now and who don't feel like community boards for them are the best way to kind of get it in, get it in with council and have their voice heard, so?
It's a good question and I think, I guess what I would say is that, okay, we've kind of had the sharp shock of the potential for loss of them. Maybe now is the time to have a serious conversation about how, how could and should community boards function differently and better? I don't know, I mean, Paikakariki seems to function very well as a community board. Other areas have struggled. How we get better functioning at community boards, I mean, what's the purpose of a community board, right? I mean, we've got statutory purpose, but maybe we need to start thinking more broadly about how that is. I don't think that community boards have been supported and resourced as well as they could and should. And I think, Mr. Mayor, yourself, at the election, you were supporting more, better resources and more support. And I agree with you and probably lots of other people do. It's a good question, but we do need to start thinking about doing better and being more open and engaging, absolutely. Not one that I can answer clearly, though.
I've got a question for you. In your submission, you touched on the concept of clean slate.
Yes.
And correct me if I'm wrong, what you seem to be saying is that there are legal obligations, which makes the clean slate not the right way to approaching it, or it compromises evolution?
Yep.
Let me test that in the parallel RMA process where the dictum of pakatoki, if you like, is that you come to making a decision with an open mind, but not necessarily an empty head.
Yes.
So isn't that a parallel in the sense that clean slate is just a state of mind for you to engage, rather than dismissing anything, you can include everything or dismiss everything? That is the status?
Sort of, yes, I'd agree. So I've referred to it as being like a thought experiment. So the way that I'd kind of approach it myself would be, starting with a clean slate, how do we think it should be? I get that, that's probably a useful way to think about the future. But once you envisage a future, you then have to look and say, well, what have we got? Is there things that we have to kind of manage? So for example, I thought about this this morning. If I was the new owner of the airport and I wanted to start with a clean slate of what do we do with the space? And my answer was fill it with houses. First thing I'd need to do then is go, well, how do we deal with the buildings that are already there? So I'd say a similar, similar situation, if we're going to look and go, well, the future, the best future involves no community boards, then what you'd have to do is look and go, well, we have got community boards, how do we dis, or abolish them, as the local government commissions say? So then you'd have to go through that legal process of abolishing the community board lawfully to get to that clean slate vision.
Thank you, councillor. This, we'll have, we'll continue the discussion.
Sure.
Moreina Beattie, I'm a bit disappointed in your shirt game this morning, but good to see you here again.
It's morning for community boards.
Oh, okay, very good. So on that topic, a little bit of a question around some of the other submissions we've received. Now, I appreciate that as not an elected member, you wouldn't have had the benefit of reading the submissions that we've read to date. Some of them have got some really challenging proposals on there. One includes the suggestion of a Rahmati councillor. So I'm interested in your thoughts around your championing a community board for Rahmati. What's your thoughts around a councillor for that area? Given that community boards don't have a vote around the table, there's been suggestions around them having a vote as well. So effectiveness, just interested in your thoughts around that.
It's, it's a question actually I had with the staff when I attended one of the workshops. I think it was Asha that put in the submission for the Rahmati ward councillor. He, actually, I made an error in my submission when he got his back. He realised that he didn't submit for a community board, he submitted for a ward. It's a good question. If you had a ward just for Rahmati, it leaves you with a problem with Paikakariki because it's only 1,800 people, so it doesn't justify a ward of its own. And it can't really be a community of 1,800 people with a community board and a ward. That's, you know, not fair and it's, you know, it doesn't work. So I kind of accept that probably at the ward level, it makes sense to have Rahmati and Paikakariki. The problem is, you've then got one ward councillor who would have to sit on two community boards. And again, that's a big workload for a single councillor.
So just to follow up to that, from what I'm hearing to you, the local government commission's approach around the plus and minus 10% is important. So then what should be around the why can I challenge that we've received lots of feedback around?
I've stayed out of that because, you know, that's not my area.
Fair enough.
There's various ways, I mean, I probably am in the camp that sees if we're going to have wards, let's have more of them and smaller, right? Then have the district-wide councillor as well. I think there's real value to having ward and district councillors, they offer different things and they do different jobs. But they can also cross over and help each other and what have you. So.
So thank you very much, we've got to move along.
Thanks, mate.
All right, fair enough.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll accept that impingement on my freedom of speech, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The next presenter, Mr. Turba, welcome.
Thank you, Moreina. I was quite stunned to find, just a month before things closed, that there was a proposal that to do with the things we're talking about today. So I asked to appear before the council in support of my existing two written submissions and to reinforce concerns shared by many of the 531 submitters about the potential loss of grassroots electoral representation in shaping the future of Kapiti. And can I underline the words, "in shaping the future of Kapiti"? To my mind, the proposal is a lost opportunity. Instead of looking at ways in which wards and community boards could better work with their communities, it's like a shutdown. As a district, we face rising challenges from population growth, social, economic and environmental pressures, and the impacts of climate change. To win and hold the support of our rate pairs through changes like these means higher levels of connectivity and engagement to find workable solutions. Where substantive change is involved, it is no longer sufficient to formulate proposals in an ivory tower and expect rate pairs to fall into line. The scale of public objection to this representation review illustrates the point. A key part of connectivity, particularly in dealing with change, is working well in advance with rate pairs to determine the boundaries, identifying where the pressure points will be and ensuring proposals are practical and achievable. KCDC staff cannot do this by themselves because they are not local politicians. They must be seen to be neutral and there is a continual loss of institutional knowledge through staff turnover. Pardon me. By contrast, elected councillors and community board members are not only acutely aware of political sensitivities and the consequences of change, but are in place for some years and have the luxury of actively engaging with rate pairs. More importantly, they are elected to be leaders and advocates for their communities and while their primary role is governance, that does not mean they cannot play a more constructive part in dealing with change. So before the KCDC reduces wards and scraps community boards, please consider a more positive approach to building a collaborative future. Here's another option for the KCDC. Retain the existing representation system for the next six years because it basically works and use the intervening time to first clarify its claim of, quote, "confusing layers of representation and barriers to engagement" and if true, sort them out. Secondly, make better use of its relationships with councillors and community board members so that by working together, electoral representation is strengthened. Thirdly, identify practical improvements in the short term, including strengthening councillor and community board's involvement and responsibilities to more effectively play their roles. And finally, to organise a more thorough evaluation acceptable to rate pairs before the next representation review. Finally, we all want the same thing, a strong, united electoral representation system that helps build Kapiti. Thank you.
Councillor McConaughey and then councillor Holbrooke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for coming here. One of the things that we discussed before the proposal out was the idea, how could we improve the community boards? But it wasn't something we could consult on. So following up on, on your idea of giving them more responsibility, can you be more specific on how you give them more responsibility and how that weighs with our responsibilities as decision makers?
So to give you a context, I've been a rate payer in Kapiti in part of the 1970s and continuously since 1988. So I was here for the local government review and what fell out of that. And I watched with sadness that the dreams of the author of that report have not been met. He saw community boards as a critical part of the democratic system in the connectivity and engagement part of the job they should be doing. I'm not saying they're not doing that, of course they are. But there seems to be no encouragement from the council itself or from the staff or whatever to actually find ways of creating ways to build better connectivity and better engagement. There seem to be so many limitations built into the system that it's dispiriting. So that's my answer.
Thank you, Chris, for your submission and certainly the years of experience you bring as an elected member is very valuable in this conversation. So part of, part of your submission was about turnover and the fact that, that staff turnover quickly, whereas elected members stay for some years. Did you actually look at the community board membership turnover in making that statement? I'm aware that we've actually had three or four places that have forced by-elections just in the last three years and that certainly the Paikakariki community board is full of new members.
That's a very good question. My immediate response is, you need to analyse why community boards step down, for whatever reason, because there's a problem that sits there, I believe. Overall, the staff factor...
Um, overall, the staff factor is not a criticism of staff, it's the fact of life that staff turnover means. Let me give you an example. I'm involved with two organisations that are in the middle of trying to develop residential um systems. They get brilliant staff some days who want to be helpful and, and get things done, then that person leaves. Then they have to re-educate the next person and so on and so on. And it's a very time-consuming and demoralising way of trying to do business. So there is a problem in staff turnover, not so much because it happens, because it's life, but because if there was a better connectivity with community boards and wards, some of that might be capable of being diffused.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coates. Quick question.
My question's just around the empowering of community boards or giving them more power. That, that comment has come through a number of the submissions, specifically those words around more power for community boards. Um, and actually that they can do a lot more. Um, my question to you as a submitter who has said similar is given that uh in elections, we often struggle to get enough people standing for community boards. I, I know that myself from, in our own community. Um, and then those elected sometimes struggle to actually attend meetings, briefings and workshops. How do you see that they will then cope with actually having to do more?
So in terms of recruitment, again, the question has to be asked, what incentive is there in place from this council to encourage people to stand? There is nothing. And I, I know of no incentive to encourage people to stand apart from the, the rotational thing where you all go, you all say, we must have people standing. What are the benefits of standing? What are the opportunities of standing? Those pictures are never painted. You learn by osmotis, osmotis once you get into the system. So in terms of recruitment, it doesn't seem to me there's much incentive for people to want to stand.
I'm probably more interested in the ability to be able to make the increasing workload that's suggested by more responsibilities and more power.
That comes down to the start, the part, the point that Bede and others have made, that really there needs to be a sit-down and work out a better way of doing things. And it's a great pity to me that in the, in the proposal that's before this council, there is no opportunity for doing that because that might deliver some really interesting fruit.
Thank you, Mr. Tuber. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Um, the next submitter is Quentin Poole by Zoom. Mr. Poole, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yep. Three minutes and then.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Um, first of all, I'd just like to bring up one issue um that worries me over all the submission issues we've been dealing with over the past year or so is that the lack of opportunity of people uh to come in at, at evening and do evening submissions. Uh, to give you an idea, it's costing me in the summer about three thousand one hundred to sit here today because I've had to cancel meetings, cancel appointments and travel a further distance than I was originally envisaging. So it's a real cost to myself, but I, I suspect it's a real cost to a lot of people who work out of the district. So getting back to the thing, um, I support the current ward model with revision. I do not support the proposal retaining five district-wide councillors. I do not support the renaming of the current four wards. I do not support the removal of the community boards. The issue highlighted in all the councils' lectures relates back to the single, single premise of accountability. Accountability of elected representatives to the community, accountability to diversity of the district and accountability to the communities of interest within the district. When analysed on this issue, both the current model and proposed model fail. We currently only have fifty percent of councils doing the hard yards within their communities as ward councillors. The rest can do as much or as little as they wish, once elected. Under the auspices of the, of the Local Government Act, all councillors are mandated to do what's best for the area as a whole. Therefore, the premise floated that district-wide councillors are supposed to do what's best for the area as a whole is incorrect if comparing district-wide to ward councillors. And I think that's an important point. I think you're all working for the same rationale, for the best of the district. It doesn't matter whether, what area you come from, capity is relatively small compared to the Wellington region, North Island or New Zealand. You know, we are all working for the best for our district. If we were truly accountable, we would divide our district into five wards and we'd separate Paikakariki and Raumati. Paikakariki and Raumati also have a physical boundary, same as Waikana and Paraparam. And there is no direct connection with the individual communities of interest. Unfortunately, I am unable, due to the lack of information supplied by council staff for us to write these submissions, there was nothing about individual areas, uh population areas or uh things like that. So we could actually draft up some other ideas to illustrate these points. The accountability rationale extends to the community boards, which have not been about as in the terms of LGA two thousand and two. I feel it does not realise that the community boards have a separate function of overview. Services provided by council within that community. And that's something we are not seeing reported back to us, at least if they are doing it. I don't believe they are doing it. They should be, really be the eyes and ears. Um, and it reminds me rather of other systems um set up around New Zealand. Uh, for instance, the uh Shareholders' Council for Fonterra, which is an overview of the board. It gives us an extra ability to report and bring in other ideas.
Can you, can you wind up? People might want to be asking you questions.
Pardon?
You'll be cutting into your question time, really. Mr. Poole, can you wind up your submission?
Right. I think the, the other issue is the lack of use of expertise within the community. The previous speaker talked about the um local, um, the review of the local government in two, uh, nineteen eighty-nine. So Brian Elwood actually lives in our community and should have been used to help develop some of these ideas. Here's someone with the expertise who could have helped us prove, uh, improve and give us some rationale and some good thoughts after observing what's happened all the way through. I know he's not happy with the way it works at the moment and he would have had some useful input. Thank you. I'll wind up at that point.
Questions? Counselor Hamphard.
Kyura, Quentin, you, you mentioned there getting some expertise from people who live in the community. And we've heard from other speakers so far this morning that it's important too that we kind of talk about the future. And also obviously that then means future generations and young people. So I'm just wondering too how you, yeah, how you kind of, how you think, um, or, or how, yeah, how we should take kind of youth perspective seriously in this, considering their expertise of what they think would work best in the midst of, or as we're in the midst of these, these various challenges and how representation needs to work moving forward. Um, how do you balance that expertise also that young people have?
I think it's important that everyone uh has the ability. And that is why I, I opened up on my worry that you, you as group as councillors have not used your governance factor to control the submission thing. To have the staff tell us that we cannot have um things in the evening. Now, if we want the youth to be involved, surely they're meant to be at school or at university or at work during the day. They have not got the luxury like I have to forego three thousand odd dollars today. They, they need an evening session. So that's part of it, Sophie. So we've, we've got people working hard and communicating with them. Make it easy for people to, to contribute, not make it more difficult.
Right. Um, thank you very much. There doesn't seem to be any other questions. So thank you for your, for the time you've put in, Mr. Quentin.
Thanks, Go.
The next submitter is John Gibson. Welcome.
No, it's fine, thanks. Mr. Mayor, councillors, thank you for the opportunity of coming to speak to my submission. I think it's fairly patently obvious from as I oppose the changes which have been proposed. I've lived in Paraparam Community, in the Paraparam Raumati Ward for the last twenty years. I stood unsuccessfully after the Paraparam Raumati Community Board in two thousand and nine. From that experience, I learned a great deal about the responses, responsibilities of boards and their value to the respective community. It was a shock to me to find that there was no job description for a person standing for the community board available from the council at the time I stood as a, for board membership. I was told to read the Local Government Act, so I did. In respect towards, the four wards of Oteki, Waikanae, Paraparam and Paikakariki are, are unique. Each have their own distinct personality of community interests and needs. And this current structure of wards allows a positive local focus to be brought to the council table and advocated for. I've carefully read the research report, the researcher's summary and the council's submission document. For myself, I can identify nothing but to warrant the major changes proposed by council. My conclusion is that despite all the deficiencies it might have, the current ward representation works well and upholds the principle of democratic participation in council activities at a grassroots level. I reiterate, I conclude there's no need for change toward boundaries. The amalgamation proposed of Paraparam and Waikanae, I think is absolutely disgraceful. They're so distinctly different with different needs, that would be an unworkable ward. In respect to community boards, I'm well aware of the range of activities of the boards, as I mentioned, I read out, I read in the Local Government Act and delegations that council has given to boards. I maintain that capity boards and capity largely work very well. They allow rate payers to have direct input to council activity at local levels and I've participated in those board meetings myself. If the delegations currently given to council board, community boards are to be implemented by council, then in my view, they're best undertaken by the community boards. My conclusion is that community boards must be retained. In summary, I believe we have generally a well-structured, community-focused council which enables input from the various communities of interest in capity. My recommendation to you is that no change be made to the existing ward structure and I advocate strongly for the retention of community boards. Thank you.
Counselor Hamphard.
Kyura, so you mentioned that things seem to be working pretty well. I'm just wondering if you feel that there's anything that could be being done better? Like any ways to enhance the current representation arrangements that we have now then?
Well, I think uh reporting back in the media would be a good way of communicating what, what boards are doing and what council's doing. I don't see a lot in the, in the, in the media about reporting back what a community board did last meeting last night, for example.
Right, John. Uh, doesn't seem to be any other questions. Thank you for the time you've taken to come.
Thank you.
The next um presenter is Oteki Community Board Chair Christine Pabst.
Right, ready? Okay. Your worship, councillors present, members of the public who may be live-streaming this. And the office is present. As Chair of the Oteki Community Board, I am here to support the board's submission on the representation review and to ask that you strongly reject the proposal to abolish the four community boards. You have our submission, you have some five hundred others. Most, if not all, want you to keep empower community boards. I know how difficult it is to review five hundred submissions. I have copies and I've been skim reading. I know most of those who speak to you in person or via Zoom will be saying much the same thing. I will keep my comments short. To accept the review's proposal, you may clearly show that it's to promote, to promote good government in, in of the district and its communities. We submit that you cannot do this. We believe we've demonstrated this clearly in our recent submission. Abolishing community boards will not and cannot provide fair and effective representation for individuals and communities as required by the Local Government Act two thousand and two. All it will do is get rid of flex roots democracy. Oteki is a recognised community of interest. Without a community board, our local residents who voted for us in a democratic election will be left with lower level of democratic representation and fewer local avenues for raising issues with council. Much has been said about the research from Empathy Design. The consultation brochure sent to residents uses the research to support the disestablishment of the boards. But the research also clearly points to advantage of the boards, including their ability to bring the voice of the community to council rather than the often quoted barrier of engagement. The proposal has the ward councillors doing much of the current work of the boards. Good luck with that. What makes the boards work is their connections to the community. One person, even if they do have support from a secretariat, will find that difficult. In a personal submission, I've suggested it makes more sense to abolish the ward councillor positions and to have four membered community boards backed by a secretariat under that role. Be that as it may, it's clear that the Oteki Community Board has been proactive over the years in gaining recognition of the needs of Oteki residents and getting that recognition from council. Oteki is clearly a community of interest and our submission and the support we have gained in the submissions you have received shows people know and appreciate that. The people of Oteki engage with their board. I know that a simple trip to the supermarket to get milk may take an hour by the time I've had numerous people come up to me and ask questions about council and local issues. All the members report similar situations in their daily lives. Remove the board and award councillor may take, may never get out of the supermarket. And I know this applies to the other boards. Board members are locals, approachable and involved in their communities. We are the friendly voice of council and we are local democracy. In conclusion, I want it on the record that the Oteki Community Board strongly disagrees with the amalgamation of Paraparama Umu and Waikanae wards and support Waikanae in their submission. And my ask again that you strongly reject the proposal to abolish the four community boards. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, questions? Counselor McCann.
Christine, um, really interesting to read. Now, I've also read quite a few comments online. And I was wondering if you'd like, in those comments, you've said to get rid of the district ward councillors and the um other councillors. So I'm just wondering where you stand, because you'd be only left with the mayor and the community boards if you read your comments.
I didn't say to get rid of district-wide councillors. I just, it was, it was just another, another, another spanner to throw into the works, I suppose. Something else to think about, maybe four community board members opposed to one ward councillor could be far more effective in a district than a single ward councillor. Not necessarily getting four votes at the table, but, you know, one vote for the, for the, for the board, but, you know, it's, it's just a theory, something to think about.
Oh, absolutely. Um, and, and that's why I would, you know, how, how do you reconcile both things at the same time? The second question, if I may, Mr. Mayor, is one of the things that I've read over and over again in, in the submissions is the idea that without a community board, uh, we wouldn't be heard. And one of the things that I, I'd like to ask a response for is if there are a series of community boards all advocating for their region, does that cancel each other out or does it just make for a, a richer form of information that we then have to?
I don't see how it cancels each other out because each board is, is representative of their community, so they are a voice for their community. Capity, the communities are spread out from Paikakariki up to Oteki. And the, the boards are in, in that community, they're not spread out. We could, under the present, what, you know, you want to put forward is we would have district-wide councillors and award councillor. Waikanae would have nothing. So where is Waikanae's voice in all this? They would lose absolutely everything. And Oteki's the same. Our community are a very close-knit community. They talk to the community board members. The community board members live in the community. We're fortunate this time round that we have two district-wise and award councillor and the mayor in Oteki. But that's not always going to be the case. We could end up with nobody other than a ward councillor. And I mean, James is great, he's a really good ward councillor, but I've never seen him in our supermarket. I've never seen him at the golf club. I have never seen him at the RSA. Whereas the community board members are there.
Right. On that note, thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Coates.
Yeah, look, I have to.
Yeah, look, I have to admit, I very rarely go to the supermarket.
If you do, you might never get out.
I do go on occasions and, and absolutely what you've said is, is right, you do get kind of cornered sometimes, but that's not why I don't go. Chris, I've got three questions and I'll try and keep them very brief and succinct.
Make sure, make sure it's a very targeted question and your response is very sharp because we need to keep.
I would have finished one by now.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
I'm having trouble reconciling the board submissions with individual submissions because your submission is co-signed by board members. However, if I look at Marilyn Stevens' submission, which is a co-signee to your submission, she is favouring district-wide councillors and no ward councillors. And equally, your comments to Oteki today suggested no ward councillors as well. So it would just be helpful if you could explain why there is, how to reconcile that, your own views around removing ward councillors and, and strengthening community boards.
It was just another theory. I mean, we're all entitled to our opinions and, and I brought that forward to the, the board members and they had their own theories on it. But I didn't see that that should stop me from saying, just because I'm part of the board, from putting forward my own personal view. And I did not put that in our board submission. I did it in my personal, and to me, my personal one is not as a board member, but as a community member of Oteki.
All right, and so you personally think that it would be better with no ward councillors and just community boards?
It was just a theory. It, it could be, it may not be. But the same thing applies to what you were sa, what you're saying in, in the resolution to get rid of, get rid of boards without any, anything to back it up.
The second one was, there's been comments around the quality of the feedback from empathy, understanding that all the community boards had an opportunity to be involved up until the stage that the councillor, the decision-makers made the proposal to go out. Were any concerns raised through that process around the quality of that information?
Let me put you straight on that. We were told there were, how many, sent the thing of how many meetings there were. There was one original supposed workshop, it was at night. And I think that was the very first one, and that was just a rundown on what was going to happen. Then we had someone from council come to our board meeting. Now, that, that came through as three meetings, but it wasn't, it was one per board. And that was the same thing, just on what the review was about and, and that we had to participate. We went to one workshop on the first of June and that was where we were given the scenarios by empathy. And that was the only time. The next one was on the fifth of August, when we were told what was going to happen.
I think James has got, James has got another question.
Okay, so I wasn't really questioning the meetings, it was the quality of the information.
Well, there was no quality because there wasn't any.
Okay. The third one is around the Waikani.
Let me just say, don't take this into debate.
No, I'm not. I was asked a question, I answered it.
Yep, the third one was around the position around the Waikani ward. Understanding the plus and minus percent requirement of local government commission and not KCDC and the board's view that Waikani should have its own ward and own councillor. Are you suggesting then that, that councillor should represent, should be the 26.3% or whatever it is over, underrepresented or in terms of the workload on the councillor? Or that they should then have two ward councillors and be overrepresented?
No, I think the status quo is quite fine with, as far as Waikani is concerned, one ward councillor and a community board.
And to just put that to the commission at an overrepresentation of 26%?
Well, I mean, they've passed it before and the, well, I don't understand the one or minus 10% anyway, so I'm not going to actually go there because that sort of blinds me.
Moving along, Councillor Provanov, you have a question.
Through you, Mr Chair. Thank you, Chris, for your submission and for coming on to speak today. So I have two questions. So the, the first meeting that was with council staff to talk about this process, was that more about you providing information to council staff rather than council staff providing information to the community boards?
The council staff came to the community board and just went through the representation review and what was going to be done. That there was going to be public consultation and the steps that they were going to go through. And that was it. There was nothing about what was actually going to happen or.
Okay, thank you. So that's my first question. My second one relates to community boards and I'll ask this in relation to the Oteki Community Board. So, you know, so you've talked about the importance of the Oteki Community Board. Can you, can you provide any examples or are there examples of where the community board have actually solved problems in the community that have never come to council, never come to councillors?
Not off the top of my head, no. I mean, I can, I can tell you the things that have come to council and have got through council votes because community board has been there, putting things through and actually gaining assets and things for Oteki itself. I mean, the swimming pool is a classic example through Penny Gaylor and the community board. I mean, we saved the pool. I mean, we got the new roof, it got renovated. That would never have happened otherwise.
So I suppose I'm thinking more about other issues amongst, from individuals on the community?
Oh, I, I have people coming up to me questioning about trees and all sorts of things and I point them in the right direction to, to, to ring the help desk.
So I, I'm sure you can, I'm sure you can give.
Those are just everyday things, that's, yeah.
Thank you.
Christine, I'm sure you can give Councillor Provanov a list offline.
I could, yes, eventually.
Thank you.
For your time.
Thank you, thank you very much for listening.
All right, the next speaker via Zoom is Tim Cosley.
Kiurukato, good morning, everybody. Thanks, thanks for hearing me. And look, we've had some pretty impassioned submissions this morning already. My, my, I've really only got one point to make and that is that Waikani is a distinct part of this region and deserves its own voice. And, and I'm urging you not to remove the Waikani ward. I think it's really important to give a voice to Waikani. And, and I heard the point there about overrepresentation or underrepresentation. I think that's better than no representation. And just bear in mind that the proposal itself doesn't actually give any extra council manpower. It would still be the same total number of councillors across Paraparamu and Waikani. It just removes the ability for one to definitely come from Waikani. So I, I, I think if you really wanted to have a truly proportionate one, as I said in my submission, you'd need to go to 11 ward councillors and you could do that proportionally, won't be 5,000 people. But actually, I think really we're trying to fix something that isn't that broken. And I think we should be just maintaining the, the status quo. To, to just remove Waikani seems a little ad hoc. Either you remove all the wards and then you have truly, you know, represent, representative across the, the region or you have all wards. And, and I'm suggesting you should maintain all, all the wards. You know, this is about better representation, this review. And, and the point of that representation is that we get to hear the voice. And I think we've heard loud and clear in the submissions I've read and been listening to and the people that stopped me to, to speak in the supermarket or even at the RSA are saying that they want to have that ward remain in place. They want to have a voice for Waikani, that Waikani is no more a part of Paraparamu than Paikakariki would be. And so I'm going to keep this short so there's time for questions if there are any, but I would urge you to retain the Waikani ward.
Thank you. Questions? Councillor Elliott.
Thank you. Good morning, Tim. As you've been a candidate for an election, I think this is a really pertinent question for you. What would encourage you as a member of the Waikani community to stand as a community board member in a local government election? What do you think's needed there? And to stay in the role and give your best to it?
For the community board? I mean, I, I, you know, when there was the, the casual vacancies, we, we saw, you know, people put up their hands. I think people want to see that their voice is effective and that there's a mechanism through which they can be heard, that better representation. So the heart of what you're trying to do is, is great if you're looking for better representation. But if they're going to see that they can make these submissions, but nothing happens, that, that the decisions get stuck with. You know, people felt a bit hurt by the losing the recycling transfer station in, in Waikani. And they want to believe that their voice can be heard. And I think if they, if you as a council can demonstrate that there is an effective way that people can have a voice, that they can be heard and that they will be listened to, they want not just to tick the box, but to actually make a difference. I think that encourages more people to take part.
Thank you.
Councillor Compton.
Kiura, through the mayor, thank you for your submission, Tim. I'm just referring to your written submission here. And your final point, you make the comment that you don't think this review is necessary or well timed. Are you aware that representation reviews are required every six years under section 19H of the Local Electoral Act?
Yeah, thank you. And I know you asked me almost an identical question last time I submitted as well. Yes, I am. But I think the timing of, you know, looking to remove the voice of somewhere like Waikani, I don't think that's been helpful. I think people want to feel at the moment like they will be given more of a voice, not less. And, and I think we, we see that in the broader submissions.
Councillor Holbrooke.
Hi, Tim. Thanks for your submission. I just wanted to rectify something that seems kind of not consistent to me. First of all, you said the current system isn't broken and that people feel represented and that they feel like their voice is heard. And then you brought up the issue of the Waikani recycling station and how the community felt let down by that. But however, that situation happened under the status quo. So could you please explain that to me?
Yeah, sure. So I'm saying that the current system is maybe imperfect and as Councillor Coates said before, there's a, a underrepresentation or if you went to two, it would be overrepresentation. But there is some level of representation. And I, and I, and I don't know that it's worth fixing and going to 11 councillors to make it truly proportional. What I'm saying is when I was asked about what would encourage more people to engage in some of these processes is that there are a number of people that have spoken to me that have said, hey, we submitted or we wanted to, you know, to keep the Waikani transfer station, but felt that it was a foregone conclusion and that despite the submissions, despite the work of maybe a community board, it wasn't, it wasn't kept. And so what I, what I was saying there was if, if those voices were heard more or followed more, that might encourage more people to participate in that mechanism. But in terms of the overall structure of the council, I think you, I think to just remove one ward because it might be technically underrepresented sounds, sounds a little bit cute and not the most helpful thing to do at this time.
Okay, thanks.
Tim, no other questions. Thank you for the time you've put in.
Thanks a lot.
Next, Marilyn Stevens.
Atamariye, thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. You will have a copy of my submission and just I heard Councillor Coates say before that my submission was a part of the community board submission. That's actually not true. It was my own, it was my own submission, nothing to do with any of the other members. So many councils, I, I want to share with you some words from Dr Mike Reid from LGNZ. And I want you to listen and digest these words. And I'm sure at the end you will agree, the proposal you've put forward should be rejected. Many councils are currently undertaking representation reviews and the future of community boards is becoming more and more topical, with boards in many districts and cities having to make the case for their continued existence. Indeed, some councils are even suggesting that impending local reform will make community boards irrelevant, yet quite the opposite is true. We don't need less local democracy, we actually need a lot more. As anyone who attends a community board conference would know, community boards play a role in building strong communities and addressing the sort of problems and issues that both communities and neighbourhoods face. They do this by working with their communities and harnessing the knowledge and enthusiasm of local citizens to make neighbourhoods and communities a better place in which to live. Citizens working with their elected representatives to develop solutions that are appropriate to their own circumstances is needed more than ever. We cannot depend on bureaucrats to find all the answers. Community boards are one of the ways in which councils keep in touch with flex roads, a role that has increased in importance as local authorities have become larger and communities more diverse. Many councils have grown beyond the natural boundaries of communities of interest, responsibility for representing those communities and enabling them to make decisions about their neighbourhoods is left to community boards. Strengthening neighbourhoods is one of those roles that sits uniquely inside the local government and community boards mandate. While many organisations contribute to delivery efficient services, local government's unique space is the quality of local government governance and the provision of mechanisms that allow people to have a real say about what goes on in their neighbourhoods. Such mediating institutions play a crucial role in strengthening, strengthening the fabric of our communities, including people's willingness to volunteer and help their neighbours and to express dissent. Providing avenues for people to interact and take part in civic life contributes to higher levels of trust and reciprocity. So council should retain community boards, still send a senior manager to meetings to listen, invest in training programmes for neighbourhood leaders to teach them how to run grassroots organisations, establish a community enhancement fund to make competitive awards to grassroots organisations, invest in neighbourhood enhancement programmes which draw heavily on local volunteers, such as anti-graffiti programmes. The future of community boards is tied up with the future of community governance overall and the way in which citizens are able to have a meaningful say about what happens in their streets and their neighbourhoods. This is perhaps more important today, given the growth of false truth narratives and willingness of authoritarian leaders to exploit social division and feelings of powerlessness. A strategy that enables people to have agency and to have a real say about the nature and development of their town is urgent. Active citizens create what the economists call positive externalities. The more citizens network and interact with each other and take part in civic affairs, the better the quality of community life. The challenge is to restore the commons and build social capital. Local government and local democracy are critical factors. We should not underestimate the importance of local sports clubs and competitions and their contribution to building social capital, something that cannot be created by council. Social capital is also created in communities and neighbourhoods as a result of people brushing up against each other, forming relationships and identifying their common humanity.
Are you, can you sum it up?
Yep. So, yes, so although council is debating whether to keep community boards or not, the need for sub-local democracy has not gone away. In fact, as the population grows and becomes more diverse and the more that central governments find themselves unable to address the critical issues facing our communities, the greater the need for more active and effective democratic engagement at a community level.
Right, questions? Councillor Coates.
Modena, Marilyn, I just, I, I do need to correct you because you've stated something that I've said that is wrong. I didn't say that your submission is to community boards. What I'd said was that you're a co-signee understandably as a member of the community board. And I'm just trying to reconcile how your submission differs. You're, you're a full board member for the Oteki Community Board and two of them, both you and Chris, have stated in your submissions to get rid of ward councillors, which, you know, could be a valid option, and replacement of community boards. Yet your board submission talks about retaining the status quo. So that's my first question, then I've got three others just quickly after that.
Well, I'm not actually sure what the question was because it sounded like a statement. But to me, what the community board has asked for is for the retention of community boards and I absolutely support that, as long as they get more support from council because at the moment they get none virtually. And my own submission, what I suggested about getting rid of ward councillors was actually an option. If we're looking at getting rid of a layer, that could be a layer, it's an option.
So I just want to test that because your submission says it would make more sense to a community board to have a voice around the council table, which I think they already do, and remove ward councillors. You've quoted Mike Reid, but yet in Mike Reid's comments, you just stopped at the point where Mike said they are not little councils and if they have a future, they need to see themselves as part of the community, not its government. But you're suggesting that they are part of its government.
No, I'm not. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that.
I've got just a couple of other questions. I, I, I understand in your submission where you're saying, give them the power to appoint EWE representatives that are remunerated for meetings they attend. The bit that I don't quite get, and it's not a criticism, it says led by council, not community board. So I sort of understood the first part of the comment. Could you help elaborate further on that?
Yeah, so that was a comment that was made around the table when all of the community boards met. And I think that initial comment was made by a Paikakariki person. And I, I think we want, we want the ability to be able to get an EWE representative around the table at our community board, so from our community. so from our communities. But if that's to be paid or whatever, that should be supported by council.
Okay, thank you. The last one refers to, um, you said sometimes a personality issue. Sorry, it is sometimes a personality issue and that if council were doing their job, would help sort out with team building. Could I just clarify, when you say council and it's something that many people do, are you referring to the table? Are you referring to the councillors and the organisation?
I'm probably referring to the council, not the councillors. Um, and I, I had personal experience of this myself at the last elections that you're probably all aware of. I actually begged council staff to do some team building prior to our induction at the beginning of this triennium and was told it's not council's job. So I think that's actually terrible. It's, it's not a, not a good way to, to run. You know, it's more or less a voluntary body. I mean, the money that the community boards get paid is nothing and they didn't get the training that they needed.
Thanks, Marilyn.
Right. Councillor Hanford, quick question.
Yes, sorry, Kiora Marilyn, just a real quick question from me. Um, you mentioned in response to the question, do you agree with the new boundary lines? That if we have to change and quote, it'd make more sense, it would make more sense for Waikani and Orteki to combine. I'm wondering if you could just expand on.
I don't think Waikani, oh, excuse me, I don't think we should be changing boundaries. But if we have to, I think Waikani and Orteki are probably more akin to each other than Waikani is with Paraparam. But I don't, I don't actually agree with any boundary changes.
Moving along, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Um, the next submitter is Roy Sampson.
Yeah, g'day, council, mayor. I'm Roy Sampson, now at your farm, Main Road North, Waikani. We've lived on that farm for ninety-eight years up there. And my, um, faunau have been on this coast a hundred and eighty-one years. We were third boat into Wellington Harbour. I, I totally, um, am against, um, the whole process really, um. Waikani, uh, deserves its own board, its own representation. Um, it should be not, it shouldn't be considered part of Paraparam because we've always had the river as the boundary. Um, you know, I've always considered myself Waikani. Um, all my other faunau, my grandparents, my parents and my children have all been educated in Waikani. Um, I think moving the boundary and combining the two. The boundary now, it, it goes straight through my farm and puts me in Orteki. Well, I've lived my whole life in Waikani. And someone, some, someone in an office has picked up a pen and drawn straight through the farm and decided I live in Orteki. Well, um, I'm totally against that. I believe we should keep the status quo as it is because, um, uh, one representative from the community, uh, is just not on. Um, they, they don't have the context, they won't have the, um, context in the community to, to know the problems that the community is facing. We need to retain all the community boards because they are all different communities. Piko's got its own problems, its own needs, its own wants. Paraparam is the same. Um, Waikani need, is has, is a growing community, an elderly community. It has a lot of, um, wants and Orteki's the same. So I, I'm here just to state that we should, um, retain the present status quo. And frankly, whoever got that marker pen and drew through my farm and put me in Orteki, they can shove it. I'm always spinning Waikani. Okay, that's me.
Councillor Holbrooke.
Yeah, first of all, um, did you have any con, did council have any contact with you when they were initially drawing up those boundaries? Because they were meant to talk to people who were affected by those changes.
None whatsoever. We've been there ninety-eight years on that property, hundred and eighty-one years on the coast. And, um, no one came in and approached me.
Okay.
They just drew a line through the farm and that's now I'm living in Orteki apparently, if this changes. Well, as far as I'm concerned, um, all my faunau have been involved with Waikani. Um, we're ninety-eight years there, we're a hundred and eighty-one years on the coast.
Right, we, we, we've heard, we've heard that. Have you got another question?
So, so just to clarify, you'd be in the, in the northern, the central ward, but you would still live in Waikani? And, and there's a, there's a, um.
Well, the line through my farm tells me that I live, and this new boundary change tells me that I'm going to be living in Orteki. Whereas I've lived all my life in Waikani. My grandparents, my, our farm has always been Waikani.
Well, potentially we can get somebody in touch with you to, to talk about that and clarify. I just, I just have one more question. You talk about how we need the community boards to represent local interests. Could you give me an example of how the community board supported you that, that is the basis for that statement?
Um, well, basically, basically, um, uh, I, I feel the council, uh, as a whole, doesn't listen to the community. Um, so many issues, um, have popped up, well, I could go through many in my lifetime. But, um, uh, we sort of feel a bit isolated in the community because no one listens. And I believe if, if, if there was powers could be, I believe the Waik, the community board should actually have a vote on the table. Around the world have a, a lot more, uh, input into the voting around the council table. Because, um, I think they don't get heard personally. I've seen many issues come and no one listens. It, it just appears to me as though no one listens.
Right, I think councillor Brabham has got another question.
I, I, I had.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just, you're just starting to press the time, councillor Brabham.
Through you, Mr Chair. Thank you for coming along today. I'm actually the Waikani ward councillor.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you live down Te hapua road, road by in chance?
I live right opposite Te hapua road up on the flats on the hills, under the hills.
Right, because I'm aware that no consultation was done in that area.
Yeah, the.
And I'd asked why it hadn't been done. But my question is, um, by commanding the Waikani community area ward with Paraparam, how does, how do you think that's going to work when you've, um, the Waikani ward has quite a large rural component where Paraparam is really quite different? How do you think that's going to work?
Well, frankly, um, it's changing all the time, um, where I live. Um, when I was a boy, uh, my uncles owned either side of Pekebega Road to the beach. There was three houses there. We owned the farm on the other side of the road. And, um, since it's, since then, well, it's, it's grown exponentially. And it's going to grow a heck of a lot more, um, in the future because, uh, that's where it's going. And, um, I don't, I don't think, um, I think Waikani is going to expand incredibly because there's no land in Paraparam. They haven't got the infrastructure, Kapiti Road is a nightmare. Um, you know, they haven't got the infrastructure in Paraparam to, to have more people. So it has to go north, frankly.
So a further question to that, are you aware that this representation review is based on previous sentences? It's not actually looking forward to what potential growth is going to be? Are you aware of that?
I'm aware of that, yeah. But, um, you know, I believe we have to keep Waikani as a separate entity. Um, Waikani has always been a separate entity. We play, Paraparam is, you know, the river is the boundary, always has been.
Thank you.
Right, um, Mr Sampson, thank you very much for the time that you've taken.
No problem. See you all. Have a good day.
Right, um, the next submitter is Anne Lala, welcome.
Good morning and thank you. I have given, I did send in a submission, uh, at the last moment and perhaps not as well thought through as it could be. So here is an upgrade. Ah, okay, you don't need to hear that again. It was just preamble. Anyway, you are required by law to do this. It's not magnanimous and it's certainly not democracy. We rarely see that in Kapiti. Um, so you have to comply. I live in Orteki, one of four Kapiti towns, twenty-five K north of here. Oh, I don't have to hit this on. Twenty-five K north of here, forty-one K from the south boundary of the district. An isolated, low desile, high need community, geographic isolation, demography, ethnicity, limited employment, high unemployment, social problems such as violence, alcohol, high percent of beneficiaries, excluding national superannuants, of which there are an increasing number, and poor housing earn it and it retains its decile nine status despite how illusionary house price increases. No other KC DC town displays this, these qualities. Therefore, we meet the community of interest requirements, which is perceptual, a sense of belonging to a clearly defined area. Geographically, we are isolated. We are twenty-five K north and KC DC doesn't provide any transport for those who have no money to get anywhere. Uh, functional, yes, it functions on its own. In nineteen seventy-nine, when there was the takeover, um, through the Local Government Act, we already had all the amenities we now had. A few have been smartened up. We've got a splash pad which is there and we've got a, um, small pump track which is so poorly located, nobody uses it anymore. Um, even though the Lions Club did pay for it, they had no choice in its positioning. So our community board is not listened to, but under the legislation, it has no rights. And that's the way councillors like it. I would like to reduce, to see a reduction in the number of councillors and use that money to run an efficient, effective community board. Give some power to the isolated community. We have supported it in the past and now we've got Marilyn, who is, uh, not Marilyn, um, Shelley Warwick, a superb councillor, we had Colin Pearce. Don't say that we're apathetic. Colin Pearce got a hundred and twenty people to a meeting that James challenged some of the issues inaccurately. Um, there was support, but KC DC pulled the rug on that. Give us a right to be ourselves, to take control of ourselves. We give you a lot of money, give our share back. You have the power, but you don't have to keep it. If you're in your jobs, not highly paid, but if you're in your jobs for the community, give to the community. I have a submission, um, an additional submission on how to use a pavilion. I don't know what all those bells mean, so you'll have to tell me when it comes in.
You've got to sum it up now.
Okay, I'd like to see the pavilion changed, not into a toilet block, but recognise that there was a Queen Carnival.
That's not part of the, the representation review submission. Um, but if you want to table that with staff, we'll pick it up.
Okay, it's here.
Right, um, just stay for questions. Any questions? Councillor McCann.
Thank you very much for coming. I just, um, want to clarify a couple of things. You mentioned about not a lot of funding towards the community boards. You're aware that it costs, um, rate pay is here two hundred and fifty K of funding going into helping the community boards?
How much do you get from rates?
So that's not an answer, but the second.
It's an answer that would serve. Do your maths. That's right, yes.
Is that, um, are you aware that the money set for councillors is not something that we control? And we couldn't redirect where that funding goes?
Yes, I am, but if you had less councillors, it could be divided into large amounts. Each of you could benefit a little more. And so could Kapiti, so could Orteki.
Right, uh, no other questions. Thank you very much for your time. Look, um, yeah, we need to go, um, both, um, Martin and myself have got a presentation to make. It's break time now and also, what, what?
We've got, um, two Zoom submissions before our morning meeting.
Okay, I'm rushing. Right, um, we've got, um, Janet, do you want to come in? We've got a, we've, we've got a quorum.
Uh, he, here's just the answer because we don't normally head public in meetings at the White House. Mr Fraser, oh, awesome, thank you.
Okay, everybody. Yeah, we've still got a quorum. Kiora Andy, um, you have, is it a group? So.
Yeah, five minutes.
So five minutes.
Oh, Kiora Koto, um, yes, I am speaking on behalf of Kahui Tukutuku Orteki, which is the education collective made up of Te Horo, Waitahu, Orteki Primary, St Petrisanau, Whakitipuranga, Ruamanu, Turito and Orteki College as a, um, Kahui Akor learning collective. Um, I guess, um, I firstly want to thank, uh, the council and the councillors for allowing, um, this opportunity to speak to, um, our submission. I think the first point that I'd like to make is that Orteki is very different to many of the other areas across the Kapiti coast. Um, from the time that we were annexed to the council, um, we have struggled with having a voice around the, the issues that we face here in Orteki. Um, not, um, a, and I guess also with the fact that we still haven't resolved all the cross-boundary issues that we face here, um, with various organisations. Um, I think it was clear that when, um, people were asked where they live, people stated very clearly that they live in Orteki, whereas that wasn't the case from your research across other areas. Our people identify as being part of Orteki and are incredibly worried that that voice might be lost in what we would consider a very vague proposal of representation that was on offer in your submission. Um, I also want to point out that, um, the three wards proposed, one was, um, to be called, uh, Kapiti Kitaraki and it was said that Iwi partners agreed with that. I want to make, have it on record that that is not right and Nahapua Orteki would never lose the name Orteki and nor do the residents of Orteki, I believe, wish to, to use that. So we've got inaccuracies in the statement made to the public. In terms of our voice, um, we would strongly contest that, um, it's really important that you work with us. We are a unique community. Um, our, our demographic is unlike the rest of Kapiti. Uh, we are, we have significantly more Maori, uh, we have more, uh, diverse socio-economic status and we have different needs and incredibly, um, quickly those needs are changing. And so I guess what we are asking is, um, and stating is that we don't know that the, the community board is the best model in the world, but what was on offer is being, it feels like it's being done to us, not with us. And we would just ask the council to take more time to actually work with our community to get the very best model that will determine our future, maintain the integrity of what is special to our town and our region around us, that will uphold mana finua and their desires and that we have a clear say in that. This feels very rushed and I don't believe the time is right and nor do the representatives that I am speaking on behalf of, um, at this time. And so really it's just to say, what is the rush? Why do we need to change particularly for a community that's always struggled despite the efforts of our ward councillor to have a strong voice to get the inequities that we face met? Up until now, our community board has been a voice for us. There seems little on offer that would give us any other voice, um, that would be better than what we've got at the moment. Could we not actually build the capacity of that board around what we need here? Could more time be invested? The things that were on offer around councillors meeting in our community, a secretariat, all those things, um, could be added to strengthen community boards, not. all those things, um, could be added to strengthen community boards, not just take them away. So we have concerns. Um, and that's really where our submission, um, came from. Uh, we want the council to consider that, consider the points raised and, um, move on from there. So I don't want to bore you. You've all read the submission. Um, I think it was very clear. Um, I would rather use time to answer questions, um, than, um, repeat what we've already written. If that's okay with the council?
Yep. Nam, nam here, Andy. Um, thanks for that submission. Do I have any questions? I've got councillor Rob McCann.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Yeah, he's just waiting for his microphone. Otherwise you won't be able to hear him. We seem to be having a small technical issue. Do you want to try my, my microphone? I'll, I'll, I'll ask a filler question, shall I? The thing is I've got the only microphone that's working.
Absolutely.
So, and, and you talk about strengthening the community board so that they can, um, represent the views of Ortaiki. How, how do you see that happening? And, and also, how do you feel the community board has, has represented your group up until now? What are some examples?
Well, I, I mean, I, I understand that, um, you know, we've got a place that we can actually go and discuss our issues with people and that those issues, to our understanding, are passed on through the council structures. Um, we don't have direct, generally direct access to, um, a lot of the, um, services that we might want to think we need or whatever. And so our community board is a, is an elected, um, group of people that, um, work in our town for the better of our town, for the better of our region. And we've got a long history of, um, I guess chewing the air about issues that we face. Um, and, you know, to various degrees of success. I guess what our concern is that, um, there was nothing really on offer that looked better than what we already have, um, you know. And having workshops with community groups or having community groups, et cetera, um, our concern is that the loudest voice will win. Um, and up until now, it's been hard enough for an Ortaiki voice to be heard. It's been a battle. Um, the mayor sent a letter to me outlining, um, from my last submission that there were a number of inequities that have been recognised by council, um, and that these need to be addressed. But, you know, nothing really on offer and what came out in the submit, you know, um, to us that, that offered anything better.
Yeah, thanks, Andy. I'm just going to go to Rob now.
Kiora, Andy, I'm having to run around the council to find a microphone that works. So clearly this is a, a question that something doesn't want to ask. Uh, just one of the questions I did have was, how do you reconcile? Because you have talked about the, the very strong voice from Ortaiki, but we've had two community ward, uh, two community board, uh, members advocating to get rid of the ward councillor. So I'm just wondering how, and I know that isn't in your, in your, um, submission, how you reconcile having a strong voice when it's not speaking with the same message?
I, I guess part of this, Rob, is that, and I, I stated earlier, we want time to actually develop this. Um, we want time for, um, people to actually address the issues. And I don't believe that the timeline that was on offer from March three till now was particularly, um, effective. And given COVID intervention, um, that added another layer of, um, I guess, stress, stress points around that consultation. Um, this is not saying that the model that we've got is ideal. Um, it's certainly not saying that we want to get rid of, um, our submission is not around getting rid of our ward councillor, um, or councillors or whatever. Um, it's really about saying to you, if you really want to have a strong voice, please give us the time and work with us. Don't do this, do this to us. We've got a history here in this town of having things done to us with very little consultation. And it is a critical time now for council, given that the growth area of Kapiti will be in the north. And it's an even bigger opportunity now to get things right as opposed to just deciding, um, that we'll take something away. And I almost feel that this is a more, become more about personalities than it has about democracy in some respects when I listen to the toing and froing that's going on leading into this.
Hey, thanks, Andy. And I'll take some comments that I have on your, uh, submission here offline about, um, council decisions already made about permitting identity. But thank you very much.
Yes, thanks, thanks for joining us today, Andy. Um, your time is now up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
And we now, and we're now breaking for morning tea.